At this time, I'll entertain the motion to come out of closed session back to open session.
I so move.
All right, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? Here and then, I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Now vote yes. At this time, I'd ask for each of you to certify the certification for agree. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors conveyed a closed session this date present to an affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance to the Virginia Freedom Information Act. Whereas section 2.2-3711 A1, A3, and A8 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity of Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters were identified in the motion by which this closed session was conveyed or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I'll start the certification with Mr. Early.
I so certify.
Mr. Collins.
I so certify.
Mr. Hill.
I so certify.
Mr. McCraw.
I so certify.
Mr. Dixon.
I so certify.
And I so certify. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Collins if he'd leave us an invocation and pledge. I'll stand, please. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening with this group of folks, many students that are in our midst. We just pray your blessing upon each and every one that you would give us guidance and direction as we do the business of the county. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's good to see all the kids here. I'd asked the rest of the board members to help tonight with some certificates that we're going to present to these future leaders of the hopefully county. So first will be the Carroll County FBLA and Ms. Taylor. You and your class come up and I think Mr. Early and Mr. Hill is going to present.
I'll lead you. Read them out and I'll present them. Right there's a little sponge.
There's one, excuse me, there's one caveat. Y'all have to come back to Carroll County and create a business. All right. Amanda Everhart.
That's okay.
That's good, we got students. Eli Bowman, advertising.
You don't look like Eli.
Jethro Dalton, has a business?
Congratulations.
Ethan Edwards, cyber security.
Congratulations, Ethan.
Ethan Edwards again, from network design.
I'll have to find the other certificate. I'll give it to you.
Next one's Connor Beasley, introductions, business concept.
Good job.
Justin Watson, insurance, first management.
Congratulations. Oh, you did one for him? Okay.
All right, Laura, I sup. Introduction to financial math.
Lydia's getting them all.
You gonna start checking her driver's license?
Yeah. You're gonna need help carrying all these out of here.
Riley Coleman, clinical science.
Congratulations.
John McGrady and Ashlyn Newman, marketing team.
I only had one for Ashley.
Garrett Rippey. UX design.
Why don't you just stay up there?
Lydia Webb, business law.
Yeah.
You finally get one.
Avery Brown, journalism.
You getting your exercise anyway.
Amelia Davis and Connor Beasley, entrepreneurship. Ashlyn Newman, business communication.
I don't see that one.
Amelia Davis, economics.
I don't have one for that either, I don't believe.
No marking, and we'll get, no marking, we'll get Crystal.
Caitlin Wheatley, human resources manager.
Great place.
Caitlin, pitch it, I hope I say that correct.
You're gonna get that. Pichet? It's French.
Eli Bowman and Jethro Dalton, business management.
I don't, I don't have certificates for that.
Mark that one.
Jody, what Crystal's saying is that she just made one. If they got multiple, they just got one.
Okay.
Jayden Taylor, introduction to business concept. Samantha Manuel, healthcare administration.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Would you like to say something, Ms. Taylor?
Just super proud of these guys. They are all just excellent students. They represent Carroll County so well. From region, we took seventeen members to compete at the state level in twenty-one different events. And out of those twenty-one events, we placed in the top ten in eleven different events. So that's pretty impressive at state level. Two of them, Ethan Edwards and Connor Beasley qualified for nationals and that's seven in the summer in Atlanta. So we're looking forward to taking them on to the next level.
We're also very proud of them. Let's everybody give them a big hand of applause.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something just to add to it? First of all, I feel severely underdressed. You all look really nice. But I wanted to just point out that you're talking about entrepreneurs and Ethan Edwards and Luke Watson have started something called The Ridge Podcast. It's available on every reputable podcasting platform there is available. And they started that so that people could get to know folks in our community. They've interviewed people like Gerald Goad. They've interviewed, getting ready to interview the Commonwealth's Attorney. They've, it's not political. They've interviewed staff at the high school and they've even interviewed me. But it's, you ought to look it up. It's called The Ridge Podcast. They're giving us a tool to get to know the people who are in our community that, they're asking them about their life growing up and how they got into the careers that they got into and what caused them to come back to Carroll County and work. I mean, so I just appreciate what you guys are doing. You're, you're all awesome individuals. Thank you for just being excellent students and excellent representatives of Carroll County.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Turn them around, place them, flag across.
Next on the agenda is the Carroll County HOSA and Ms. Vaughn. And I thank Robbie and, or Mr. McCraw, Mr. Dixon, I apologize, I'll be presenting.
I'm just Robbie. Okay, you ready?
If you are.
All righty. First one, Adriana Ferris Hernandez, nursing assistant. Okay.
Thank you.
Abigail Hawks, home health aide. Evangelina Hernandez, health career photography.
It's good that these kids are so active. I think it's amazing.
Leila Hutchins, nursing assistant. Grace King, home health aide. Katie Sharp, prepared speaking.
Congratulations.
Carson Sharp, clinical nursing.
Congratulations.
Ashlyn Spangler, Spangler, sorry, clinical nursing.
Congratulations, Ashlyn.
Emily Dalton, public health.
Congratulations.
Natalie Dalton, public health.
Congratulations.
Mackenzie Frye, health education. I hope I pronounced this right. Paola Garcia, public health. Am I close?
Congratulations.
Paige Hannah, health career presentation.
Congratulations.
Caitlin Huntington, health education. Cassidy Ladd, public health.
Congratulations.
Samantha Manuel, health career presentation.
Congratulations.
Nayla Stewart, health education.
Congratulations.
Cassel Bowen, medical terminology.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, also, of course, Ashlyn Spangler is first place in clinical nursing. She'll be competing in Dallas, Texas at the International HOSA Conference. Carson Sharp is third place in clinical nursing and will also be competing in Dallas, Texas at the International HOSA Conference. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Adriana Ferris Hernandez was also top five nursing assistant. Congratulations, everybody. Good luck on the competition.
Absolutely. Thank y'all for coming. You have anything you would like to add, Ms. Vaughn?
I have a lot of good students. They are always there to tell us about things and everything that I ask them to do. I took eighteen students in the state competition. Everyone went up and they danced and stepped around. And I had three flights in the top five and two days in the next six. So I would add some more.
Absolutely. Kristy, you get a picture? Good to have business leaders, but I love a nurse sometimes, too. Thank y'all for coming, ladies. Next on the agenda is the Cana Booster Club and I'll grant the floor to Mr. Collins.
All right, I think they're in the back of the room. Grayson and Callan Edwards. Y'all come on up. And you bring your mom and daddy with you, boys.
We, we don't have a certificate to give you guys tonight, but, but we do have a lot of thanks to give you for what you've done to work on the ball field there. I was going to ask Grayson, though, you remember that song you sang me on the school bus?
You're like, what you talking about, Mr. Collins?
Chuck's afraid he'll sing it, so. We just want to say thank you. You know, it seems like it's been, gosh, twenty years ago that the dream for the lights put on the ball field came into existence and it seemed like it took forever to get there, but they're there. And Cana, the ball field there at St. Paul's School is just active and there's people, there's, I mean, everywhere. Every time you go through there, there's, it's packed, full of cars and full of kids and full of adults that are there watching them and sometimes there's adults playing ball. So we just wanted to thank you all for the hard work that you've put in. Chuck couldn't do it without Heather. Heather couldn't do it without Chuck. You couldn't do it without the board that the Booster Club has and the parents that are there. So we just want to say sincerely thank you for the work that you've put in and, and the hours and hours and hours that you've put into it. Thank you very much.
I will add, I think that for last week, that all the rec games have been played down there, girls and boys, so.
Yeah, that was what we brought you up here for, too, was to say that. So thank you.
And we want to greatly appreciate, we had some water issues after, you know, putting in the splash pad and y'all stepped up and helped us get the season started and very commendable. We appreciate that, so.
Thank y'all so much for coming. I think, I seen on the schedule, there's St. Paul tomorrow night. Thank y'all. Next on the agenda, the Carroll County Fire and Rescue. This was going to be the one I was going to present, but I think Mr. Bergeron has done took it, so we're going to let him do it. No, no, that was the one, I was, I delegated all these jobs for them and then I just thank y'all. Y'all got this. You don't borrow my lugs?
I apologize about that.
That's all right.
Some of the members of the board, Mr. Watson, we do appreciate, because this kind of fell through and to fruition on Friday, so we appreciate the quick action to allow us to recognize some of our county personnel. And to that, though, unfortunately, we have one on shift who is currently on a call and we also have one that just wasn't able to make it tonight, but nonetheless, we, you know, we have this forum. I'll, I'll make it brief. In short, it was a shift for Carroll County Fire Rescue Day and this was also in the response for Laurel Rescue coverage area. On four three, Carroll County Fire Rescue and Laurel Rescue was dispatched for a male in his forties. He was unresponsive at the time of the call. Laurel Rescue first response from Mr. James Hager, he arrived on scene and advised that CPR was in progress. At which time, CCFR crew had arrived on scene and started facilitating with continuous high-quality CPR and following their arrest and ALS protocols for that related incident. During that time, the crews were able to get what we call ROSC, or return of spontaneous circulation, to the patient, at which time they made the call to transport to Twin County Airport to med flight the patient out. He had a blood pressure pulse and a stable cardiac rhythm at the time of that transition and was subsequently transported to Roanoke Memorial Hospital. After several days in ICU, we were advised that he was able to walk out under his own facilities of the hospital and maintaining that recovery at this time. So what it boils down to is we have teamwork from all our county departments on this one with the best possible outcome for the patient. I think this is another example of our resources, career and volunteer being community focused. It's an example of their continuous training, their knowledge of the protocols that they operate under. This is one of those calls that there's not a dividing line to response. They're just there to get that job done. And it's also an example and the continued goal that we have to having this same skilled and professional operational level with each call that they respond to. It was an absolute fantastic job by all. So we do appreciate the opportunity to recognize them. I'll let Assistant Chief Felton step up and call the names out.
Thank y'all not only for this, but for all y'all do for the citizens of the county. I like our businessmen. I like our nurses, but many a time, I've loved to see the ambulance arrive at the house as well. In plenty of time, it seemed like, but thank y'all for all you do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Do we want to get a picture?
Yeah.
I'm all about pictures.
Yeah, yeah. Crystal over there, gotta move the whole thing again.
Just push through the wall, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, blend this out.
Gee.
Not execution yet. Tony, was you going to speak? Was you speaking in citizens' time? Just making sure.
All right, next on the agenda is citizens' time and nobody signed up to speak, so we'll move on down the agenda to minutes. We'll move on down the agenda to minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for April tenth. Or we can do April tenth and April twenty-fourth, A and B, whichever the board so desires.
I make a motion, we approve A and B.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes, A and B for April tenth and April twenty-fourth as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start the vote. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the consent calendar.
All right, have a second.
I'll second it with a question.
All right, we'll open it to discussion. I have a motion, second. I'll start the discussion.
The vehicles are those at the county garage, is that what those are? They're surplus vehicles. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'll start the vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda, invoices. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. We can approve them. A, which would be April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and B, May eighth, twenty twenty-three, or we can separate them singly, whichever the board desires.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve A and B.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start the vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the, um, agenda is assessment, appropriation, and contract approval. I'll grant the floor to Justin to speak on this.
So as part of the CIP plan, what we have to do every four to six years is put the, uh, reassessment back out for all real estate property. We've moved this into the CIP plan to fund these things. We have received, went out to bid, um, really put a lot of, uh, efforts into trying to recruit, see who all is out there. I met with the, uh, served on part of the committee with the Commissioner of Revenue, um, and some of their office members, um, to evaluate those proposals. What we have included is the, uh, initial kind of cost estimate for what, uh, the total reassessment should come in at. And then also recommend, uh, Wamplareens for, uh, completing our, uh, reassessment.
Okay. The board have any questions for Justin on that? I'll turn, entertain a motion to vote for the appropriation.
I so move.
Do we need to separate the appropriation and the contract approval separately? Okay. So I have a motion to approve the appropriation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? Question? I'll start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And, uh, next I'll entertain a motion for the contract approval.
Make a motion, we approve the contract, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next, under new business, the V S and P agreement, the permit with draw, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I so move.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? And I'll start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, next is the, uh, Sheriff Office M O U. Do we need to, uh, read that contract, M O U, for the Sheriff's Office? Before taking action?
You can discuss it, you don't need to specifically read it line by line unless you want to.
No. Could you give a brief overview of it?
Mike, you've got the background. I've reviewed it and didn't see any changes.
Um, what this allows is, um, you know, there's really, uh, different types of funding that goes through the Sheriff's Department. One, uh, one of the, uh, uh, fundings that is received through the Sheriff's Department is through highway safety. As those highway safety, uh, funds come in, over the past, we've allocated, tried to allocate those funds for the betterment of the department. What this memorandum understanding allows, if there's any, uh, additional revenue that's over the budgeted amount, this would go into a separate fund that will allow for improvements in that department. So it might be buying equipment and those type things. So what this will do is it would have to be set in a separate fund, which would be an interest-bearing account, and also allow for these, uh, for these funds to be spent, they would come through this board again. So, uh, what this does is puts a policy in place so that as, um, you have increases or decreases within that fund, it would balance out and this would be a way to cover from year's changes. So you might have one year that, uh, uh, receive additional funding and one year that might not. This would give the opportunity to buy equipment and doing the things that need to be done instead of going directly into the general fund.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve this M O U.
I so move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? All right, here and then I'll start the vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the six-year road plan.
Make a motion, we approve the six-year road plan.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion?
Do have one question. There was, there was a couple of roads that were, were removed by, I guess, VDOT. Is there an explanation why those are removed, or is it just because of the budget? Of course, I didn't quite get that information from VDOT.
Well, I think what they do is they have a certain amount of funding and they allocate it based on priorities. You notice in here, the proposed allocation from twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, list certain routes in which they have funding for, and then the other roads, I would, I don't know which roads it was that was removed, but they should be on this list. And then, uh, as time goes along, as they evaluate the cost and prioritize them, then they look for future funding. Which roads are you?
Uh, looking at Laurel Mountain Road and Frog Spring Road. Typically, we put them on the list and yes, they, they, I prefer if they stay on the list. I know that funding only comes, you know, so often.
Right.
But if we keep them on the list, at least they'll gradually move up and have an opportunity to get pavement on the roads. Yeah, but I didn't. So it's the traffic count?
And I might would request, too, that, to have them do a new study on that, too, cause that study could have been ten years ago.
Just, just a comment and a question, Mr. Chairman. I, I, we have so many roads that get requested every year and we only have a certain number we can do and it's, it's really few in number compared to people who want them done. I had somebody contact me in the last couple of weeks down in the Fancy Gap District and I contacted Lisa and, uh, she said that nobody had ever requested it be upgraded before, but the traffic count certainly makes it to where it should be.
Right.
I just, I just wonder, I drive these roads all the time and there's got to be something that we can do to make them better, even though we can't pave them, get them up to, to that standard, because I mean, I, it's, they have valid concerns. The one, the one road that I drove down that Lisa said qualifies, the first quarter mile on that road, if you meet somebody and there's, there are twenty houses on that road, you meet somebody, you gotta back up. You cannot, the two of you cannot, and you gotta back a good ways. It's not just a few feet. I, there, there's got to be something that we can do in conjunction with VDOT to make some of these roads better. I, I had a situation in, in my district in the last few months where we requested gravel be put on the road because it was just washed out. And they came and put gravel and it was piles of gravel. I mean, you know, it just, people were dragging their cars when they went in then. I, I just, they're, I don't know what we need to do. I just, I just think that we've got to give people better, better, when they're, when the roads are that tough. And especially when we cannot possibly pave them all. So I don't know what we can do to look into that, try to come up with a plan in conjunction with VDOT, but there's got to be something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
VDOT has other programs. This six-year road program is basically funded a hundred percent through the state. We don't maintain our own roads, so what happens is they put them in the plan, they're allocated a certain amount of money, Commonwealth Transportation Board, uh, they're ranked and then they're provided funding for it. There's other sources of funding. There's, uh, like revenue sharing, but they're not funded at a hundred percent through VDOT. So in order to do some of these other changes, it would take, um, providing funds, maybe looking at capital improvements or, you know, they'll, you know, revenue sharing matches dollar for dollar. So if it's, uh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which a hundred fifty thousand dollars doesn't go very far, it's a dollar for dollar match. So in the future, if this board would like to do those type of things, maybe as we go through the budgeting time, we can add something into our CIP in order to plan projects like this. So you might allocate through a capital improvement project, I mean, through the plan to budget fifty thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year, and then within time period, looking for grants as you go along, uh, as far as ways to fund some of these projects. But, you know, with the county not maintaining the roads and not having the ability to fix these roads, we rely on VDOT or grants. So it might be something that we look like down the road as far as how do we fund these improvements through, uh, a capital plan.
Yeah, I just, I'd like for us to put them on the top burner. I mean, just so we can help some of these folks. I mean, some of them come back year after year asking, Rex, probably as long as you've been here, the same ones have come back.
And a lot of the problem is, is, you know, gravel's not fixed. You know, sight distance is not a fix, it's a patch. And, you know, as you look forward, these projects as, as you prioritize them, you might be able to bite more off if you were to, to look at other types of funding to help do some of these things. Just an idea as we go down the road.
Any further discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. McCrull?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, next on the agenda is the adopting of the county budget. I'll entertain a motion to adopt it.
Mr. Chairman, can I read a couple of statements first?
Yes, sir.
Today's discussion involves county budget and discussion may include funding for the Carroll County School Board. As many of you know, I have a position of employment with Carroll County School Board and that's substitute teacher, substitute, uh, bus driver. With regard to the proposed funding, the school board, the proposed funding would affect the entire school system generally and not myself individually. As a consequence, I as a member of a group of three or more individuals who are employed with the county school board is simply similarly affected by the decision on the proposed funding. Therefore, in this situation, the execution of Virginia State and Local Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code, Section two point two dash three one one two B one applies to this situation. In compliance with that section, I hereby declare that I am able to participate in this discussion and voting on this topic fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Also, in regards to the Sheriff's Department, as many of you may be aware, I serve as an unpaid volunteer chaplain with Carroll County Sheriff's Department because I receive no compensation from the Sheriff's Office. Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act does not apply. I want to assure the public that I can participate consideration of this matter fairly and objectively and in the public interest.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the county budget?
I'd like to make a motion, a couple of motions, uh, in regards to the budget, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to go back and add, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars back to the school board budget into our budget, and if I can get a second on that, we can discuss it.
So that would be, they're, they're, the, but the, um, voting is gonna be separated. The, the first one is the county budget.
Right, okay, so it won't be including the school budget, okay?
No, it'll be in the next one.
All right.
Yeah.
On the, on the county budget, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, well, the motion would be to, to go back and give our citizens who have paid inflated rates on vehicle, uh, values a ten percent discount on their tax bill this year. If I can get a second on that, I'll be glad to discuss it as well.
I'm motion on the floor to add ten percent back from the vehicle tax? Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, do I have a second? Open floor to discussion.
In, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, we had an eight point one four percent increase in values of vehicle, uh, of our vehicles. In two thousand twenty-two, we had a twenty-nine point twenty-nine percent increase. Two thousand twenty-three, we have a five point four two percent decrease. So that leaves us at thirty-two percent above where we were at two years ago. All of us know that for two years, our country was in the midst of a pandemic. And in the midst of that pandemic, our county prospered. I mean, I think financially, we're in one of the best situations we've been in Carroll County in many, many years. Doesn't mean that we got money to burn, but we, we did well while our citizens suffered. And, you know, while these increases are up thirty-two percent for values, according to NADA, we can't sell our vehicles for thirty-two percent above what they were two years ago. So that's my reasoning for wanting to give the taxpayers back some of their hard-earned tax dollars.
Do you have a number of what that ten percent would be?
I have not figured out the ten percent, no, Tracy.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. How would you determine who's eligible for the ten percent? Is it everyone?
It'd be based on whoever has paid those taxes. Wouldn't be anybody that didn't pay any.
So eighty-five percent of the people is the average?
Those who have paid the tax, which everybody gets a personal property tax bill.
Right.
So that's basically everybody in the county unless they haven't paid. Is that what you're saying?
If they paid vehicle tax, yes.
Anybody that owns a vehicle and paid taxes in Carroll County would be eligible.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is, is the intention of the motion to basically declare a surplus for the, um, previous year and before the end of this fiscal year to, to give a, a refund to taxpayers, or are you ask?
The intention would be to give a credit to those folks on their tax bills this year.
So may I ask a question? Are you, cause we, we did away with the license fee, which cost seven hundred and some thousand dollars, um, to the, we gave back to the taxpayer. Uh, and we also reduced the personal property rate fifteen cents. Um, I mean, I know it's not, we didn't give them everything. We, we, you know, well over a million dollars we gave back to the taxpayer. Um, but what I'm, what I'm asking, are you talking about, how are you gonna, you talking about just the people that paid their personal property tax on the vehicle?
Yeah, I wouldn't give it back to somebody that didn't pay.
Okay, but you'd have to look, get with them and see.
You'd have to go through the tax records to see who paid.
And then ten percent of, ten percent of, of what they, what they paid, is that what?
On their personal vehicles, yes. My question, I would.
We don't, we don't know a number by any means yet.
No.
Okay.
My question would be to counsel. That would be from last year's budget. That budget's ready to close out. It wouldn't have nothing to do with this year's, would it?
That's why I'm, that's, well, that's why I'm asking. It's, um, for this, for this budget year going forward, um, I, I, I think we want to clarify, we're trying to lower personal property tax rates, or are we? personal property tax rates, or are we?
Refunding from this year's budget that we're in now.
Right, and, and there's, there's a provision in the code of Virginia that allows you to declare a surplus and, and do a, a refund. I didn't know this was gonna be on for discussion this evening, or I, I would have had it at my fingertips. I would have to look back and, and make sure that we're following the process correctly if you want to pursue that. If, if that's the desire, I, I think that the, the declaring a surplus route is, is the safest and cleanest way to go rather than, um, tweaking the personal property rates. I could double check and see if an ordinance is required, which would need to be advertised. Um, but I'd be happy to, to look at that and report back to you.
Is there something we can go ahead and adopt the budget and go back and look at that?
You can't. Yeah, I think that's the way the code contemplates, is that as the, at, at some point in the budget year, you decide that we, we're trending a surplus and we'll surplus it back either in form of a credit for the December tax bill or something of that nature.
Okay.
You, you're talking about maybe a credit for the upcoming year?
Yeah.
Like if you bring a surplus in, is that what you're, Ron, you're talking about last, last fiscal year, though, correct?
It would be a credit to this year's taxes.
Okay, so you, so you're looking at this year's taxes, whoever pays this coming, the personal property tax this coming December, then we would see if we have a surplus and then, is that what you mean? And then look?
Well, I think from what I'm understanding, we can go ahead and adopt the budget, and if we want to discuss it, we can discuss it.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, because I mean, we need to, we need, I'd like to look at it and see what the surplus is and.
But you're, but you're talking about this upcoming, is what I'm saying, or?
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Oh, you're talking about a ten percent rebate on the taxes paid for twenty twenty-two?
A ten percent difference of what the, the increase is over the time period, thirty-two percent.
So we gotta look over multiple years?
Well, it's thirty-two percent for the last, when you average out over the three.
I don't know if it's thirty-two percent or some other number, but you gotta look over three years is what you're saying, and give ten percent of that money back.
I'm okay with that. They're, they're hard-working, taxpaying people.
We all are.
Mr. Chairman, um, so if we have a motion on the floor in a second, then we just vote to, do you, do you want to, um, remove your second and motion? I can rescind the motion. Go ahead and adopt the budget and then? Sure. We want to discuss this? Sure.
We'll discuss it later.
You, you remove your second.
I remove my second.
I'll remove my motion. All right. I entertain a motion to approve the adopted county budget.
I so move.
All right. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any discussions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, to bring up one thing. That with, uh, this would be approving the ex, budget with, uh, expenditures meeting revenue at a hundred and thirteen million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars.
Okay.
And this dozen, yes, this does include the funding that's, um, to be approved through the schools.
Okay.
So.
So let me ask this then. So if, if that's the case, then how can we adopt it and then have the school board budget to adopt if there needs to be discussion on that? Because they gotta be adopted separately.
Well, the, the county's budget would be, um, approved based on the funding plan on this budget.
Okay.
Now, if you plan on changing the budget that's presented for the school system, then, um, uh, it re, it would require a change in your budget as well.
Okay.
So I guess the question would be, would you like to vote on the school board budget first?
That would probably be, yeah, can I have a motion to flip?
I rescind my motion.
A and, oh, okay. Uh, and then can I entertain a motion to change the agenda to reflect the school board budget being A, or B, and the county budget being C? I'll make that motion. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? Here and then I'll start the vote with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Early. Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the school board budget as presented. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to make a change to that, to add four hundred and eighty thousand dollars back to that budget. If I can get a second, we'll talk about it. All right. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll make a second for discussion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion. Two things that I'm looking at on the budget when the school presented it to us, and I think from the discussion we've had, we come in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under what they had requested. They have in here eighty thousand dollar increase for, uh, vehicle equipment and fuel. And we know how fuel rates have increased. And then under utilities, they have an increase for heating oil, electric costs, propane and natural gas of four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So that's where I came up with the four, four hundred, uh, the four hundred and fifty thou, the four hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to put back into that budget. I mean, I know personally how much the fuel increases and the electricity increases have affected me in my own home and the constituents that are in my district, in the Fancy Gap District, have told me how it's affected their homes and their lives. I just can't imagine the school. They're doing an amazing job with our students. They're doing an amazing job giving offerings, providing teachers to make sure our students have the programs that they have, the sports that they have. If they, if, if the fuel bills and the electricity costs go up four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, in my view, they're gonna have to take that out of something else, and that's gonna be programs or teachers. So that's my reasoning behind it.
Mr. Collins, let me ask you, the, we have, I don't have it front, I'm trying to find, I think it's, is it five hundred and thirty thousand in CIP? Is that correct, Justin? Five hundred and thirty, okay, and seventy dollars? Are you wanting to take it from the CIP, or are you wanting to take it from the, to use for operating money? Or are you, are you requesting to take?
Explain to us, Justin, how the CIP is set up to work.
Um, the CIP plan would work somewhat higher towards funds that would be appropriated on a project level. We would move those funds over to the CIP plan. When a project would be approved, it would be approved, kind of like the higher due, if they're multi-year projects, it would allow for a project to carry out for a year or a half.
So if, if we were to decide to do it, could we put that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in CIP and it not be used unless those fuel costs rose and those electricity costs rose?
Um, you would put the, the amount from CIP and then whatever the board appropriated the project. So they would be approved at that project.
Okay, yeah, I would certainly be fine with it coming in CIP.
So, what, so you want to?
Yes, no.
So you're wanting to take money from the budget, if I'm correct, and then add to the CIP, is that?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, I don't want to take it out of what's already appropriated for them. Right.
Where, where would it come from out of our budget?
Where would it come from out of our budget?
I'm asking anybody that knows. I'm just curious.
Well, I think we could find it. I mean, we spend money, we, we find ways to, to buy the things that we want to buy, and we're talking about our kids here. And I don't think there's anything any more important in our community than our children.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm just asking a question. I, I'm curious as to where it's coming from. Our budget is already balanced based on what we've budgeted, and I, I mean, you, it just, where does it come from?
I, I would venture to say that we have that much money extra put aside for something.
It's not in the budget.
It may not be in the budget, but we have the money.
Well, we have the money, it should be in the budget.
Are there any further discussion?
Well, my, my.
You had a couple of questions. Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, um, we did cut the real estate by five cent this year, so the budget is very tight, as everyone knows. Um, you know, I, maybe, maybe if we move some from the CIP to operating money, and maybe if we had, if anybody want to entertain a little money that was left over from this year's budget, if we have any leftover, we could put towards their CIP for bleachers, um, that might be a suggestion.
Is that what?
But I don't, I don't, and we'd have to ask Justin, I mean, there's, I mean, there's not.
Is that what the money in the CIP is for, for bleachers or whatever the school recommends to use it for?
I mean, the way it works, they would, they would request the project.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I just think, if we were going to do this, we should have done this when we did the, the property rate. We shouldn't have reduced it that amount, because that's worth, what, two, three cents? Extra we'd had to pay to cover this amount.
Are there any further discussion?
Another question. Is, is there excess from the current year?
This year?
Yeah.
The money that, you know, there will be an excess revenue in this year. However, it has been budgeted to put in the county's existing LGIP.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, not LGIP. It will be put into the CIP plan.
Right.
So last year, what, what was done was that the, when personal property taxes, they set the rate to lower it, to discount it enough for you to not have to have the stickers. So that was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of, of, of revenue. But the rates with the increase was allowing us to be able to fund our CIP higher. So the projects you have in the CIP, if the excess revenue you have of this year's budget, what that would do is push your CIP on out. So projects that you want to do now, you would not be able to do those. We'd have to push them out for other years. Plus, you know, and the excess revenue that we have, I'm gonna say the excess fund balance we have, the excess funds that we have, that we, we plan to, in our budget, to use the interest in order to balance our budget, with some of it. So, um, you know, in order to, to look for the money, I can't tell you with confidence you wouldn't have to take it out of savings in order to do it. If you were to find excess revenues that, if you wanted to put this money into the budget, then you take a chance of taking it out of the savings that you have. And then, um, if you take this out of, you know, one way, there's two ways you can look at it. You can take it out of your, uh, capital improvement plan for the school and put it into operating. I guess it would be a decision on which would be more beneficial to the school system. But coming up with additional revenue, I, I, I'd want to say that you'd take it out of your existing fund balance, whatever you had over the years that you saved up to do these projects. But I caution that too. I just, I, I believe in being forward. You, you've got broadband and you've got an EMS building, and we've got radio, so I don't want to be held to you have the savings or you don't have the savings. Most likely, if you needed it out of savings, we could find the money out of savings to support that if we needed to.
What, what's your projected excess revenue this year, Mike?
About a million bucks. We're, that's what we're hoping for. We're hoping, we have capital improvement plans, and then we have the CIP also. Uh, that'll pay for, uh, this extra, tightens up your CIP so we can make it right now with the money that we're estimating in the future of the CIP. As we go along during this process, um, we can, we are anticipating that we can fund the CIP that you approved with the excess revenue this year plus what we budgeted annually for it. So you could pull a project out of CIP, or you'd have to pay for it out of savings?
Okay. So I'll start the voting with, uh, Mr. Early.
Would you restate the motion, please?
To put four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, correct, Mr. Collins? Correct. Into the school budget as presented?
No.
All right. Sorry, I was still explaining what was, what we expected the, the vote. So your vote is no.
That's no.
All right, Mr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
I mean, I, I would like to help some, but have a discussion, but, um.
Yes or no, Mr. Dixon?
Sorry, no.
And no. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the county budget.
Make a motion, we approve the county budget?
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next is, uh, board member comments. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Dixon. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I greatly apologize on that.
Motion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The motion was for the money, yeah. I entertain a motion to approve the school board budget.
I'll make, I'll make that a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion? All right, here and then I'll start the voting with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, we have a committee appointment?
Yes, we do. And I was gonna go through them because I don't know, there's some that, um, that we didn't discuss earlier. Right, I just, I thought we were gonna make the one, but that's. Yeah, I, we have two for the EDA still. Oh, okay, so you just want to hold off on them? No, we want to, if, if the board, they're the ones we interviewed two weeks ago. Oh, that's right, that's right. If I could get a motion to, uh, approve for the EDA, uh, Mr. Slate? I'll make that motion. All right, have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, have a second. Are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start the voting with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And, uh, I'll open the floor for a motion for the EDA for Ms. Kay Carter.
I so move.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion?
Say the name again?
Kay Carter.
Kay Carter.
All right, okay, okay.
Any further discussion? All right, here and then I'll start with, voting with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, next is the library appointment. I'll entertain a motion for appointee there.
I'll make a motion to, um, uh, put Kathy Parks on the library.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? All right, here and then I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next is the Crossroads Board. Currently, Mr. Hill's on that board. Are you, when's your term up, Mr. Hill?
I have been appointed as the primary. We did that at a previous meeting.
Okay. Y'all flipped then, so?
Yep.
So you're gonna currently?
No, we need to get somebody to replace me since I've not been running, but you may as well wait, put that off to after January.
Yeah, okay, we'll do it. And, uh, on the, the only other one's the New River Valley Regional Jail. Currently, Mr. Lyons is on that. I think there's been some discussion from the board about adding Justin to that board. Yeah, I think Mr. Lyons is rotating off, right? Yes. So I entertain a motion to put Justin on that board.
I so move.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? All right, I'll start the vote with Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next on the agenda is the board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Dixon.
Well, it's great to have everybody here tonight. Appreciate what everybody does. Great to see the young people, what they're doing in the area, Carroll Fire and Rescue. One thing I would like to, to just maybe is, uh, if Jody's interested in Justin, if, if, maybe we can sit down with the school one more time and just look at some numbers on the CIP and stuff and see if there's any more discussion with, if we can come to maybe another agreement or anything. If you're interested in knowing that, I would be. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. McCollum?
Just, uh, really like to thank the kids, the, the students that come out tonight and what they're doing and where they're going with themselves, and hopefully their futures have looked to be pretty bright. I hope that, that continues for them. Um, thank everybody, thank staff, all that they do. And just once again, like to remember Preston Hill and his. And just once again, like to remember Preston Hill and his family and loss of their dad, who was a former county employee, so.
All right. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess we brag about our students. We've had from sports to academics come before this board. And it's, it's great that we have those good students and they come from good teachers. I think that's all I got to say to see.
All right, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I think students are the highlight of our night, to be quite honest. All the, the ones who came before us, HOSA, the FBLA, our athletes and Chuck and Heather with the work that they're doing with the Boosters Club there in Kana. Just, just like to see us do everything we can to support even more. They are, they are excelling in sports, they're excelling in academics and that didn't happen because we didn't fund them, so I, I just want to do everything we can to help.
Mr. Early?
I just want to echo what's been said about the, uh, the students and their achievements, very proud of them. We've got fantastic, uh, students and teachers in the county. We want to keep it that way. I am open to the suggestion that Joey has about getting, getting with the school and see if perhaps there's some way that, uh, we could slide a little extra money their way, so it won't hurt to talk about it. I also want to thank the Carroll Fire and Rescue. The story tonight about saving that man's life was phenomenal. Uh, I don't think, uh, most people in the county even realize that we have those capabilities and without it, uh, we'd be a whole lot worse off. And finally, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be on the budget committee the past two years and it's not an easy process. It's, it takes a lot of time. I want to thank Joey, Justin, Mike, the school board and everybody that had a part in that, you know? And, uh, I think we tried to do the best we could for both the citizens of the county and all the agencies involved. I want to, want to thank all those and the remainder of the staff here at the complex. And finally, I'm glad the elevator's fixed. Thank you.
And, uh, I agree with you, Mr. Early, that, you know, uh, we need to continue to talk. I think the biggest thing of this session is tonight was just that CIP money that's set aside there. So that adopting a budget, approving a budget doesn't change that option, you know, for that discussion. Thank you all for all y'all did working on the budget. I know y'all spent a lot of time on that, we greatly appreciate that. Justin, for all your hard work on that, appreciate that. Thank Mike and the staff and, uh, I'll echo what Mr. McColl said, you know? Remember Preston and their family with the loss of Ray? He spent many a day making Carroll County what it's better and, uh, he, he should be committed for that. And, uh, thank the board for all they do. And with that, I'll turn it over to County Administrator, come on.
Oh, that's a hard act to follow.
Yeah.
Um, I agree with everything that was said. I think that, uh, I think that, uh, the Carroll County is, is going in the right direction. I think that this board has stepped forward and has, uh, done a great job over the last few years that I've been here, that I've been able to notice. You know, one of the things I was thinking about as everybody was here, you know, I always think of, um, what makes the place you live, okay? And it's the people that, uh, you know, all the children that you had here, your emergency services, your volunteers, the people that are willing to serve. The staff you have, I just, you know, I can't help but say how great Carroll County really is. I just wanted to let everybody know.
County Attorney Comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just echo everyone, hats off to those impressive young people that were here tonight. And, um, I, I applaud the board for emphasizing that because it is important to, to receive that recognition when you're, when you're young. During the, uh, during the board's discussion, I did have a chance to pull up the relevant statute on the, the surplus issue that Mr. Collins raised. That's 15.225, 11.1. It does provide that any locality made by ordinance develop a method for returning surplus real or personal property tax revenues or both to taxpayers who are assessed such taxes in any fiscal year in which the locality reports a surplus. The locality may reduce a taxpayer's refund by the amount of any taxes, penalties and interest that are due from such taxpayer or any past due taxes, penalty and interest that have been assessed within the appropriate period of limitations. So you can limit it to people who actually paid their taxes i- in full and on time. Um, and if there's ever a surplus, the surplus would first come out of any amounts that are owed to the county for, for being late and delinquent. So you can do that, it must be by ordinance, which would require, um, public hearing and, and, uh, advertisement in the public, in the newspapers twice prior to the meeting. So if, uh, it's your pleasure, I'll, um, I can prepare a draft.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.